Tuesday, August 11th, regular workshop for the Board of County Commissioners. The, we're going to start with the invocation that will be offered by Commissioner Harvey and followed by the pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Goddard.
Let us bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that we can serve the citizens of Putnam County. Father, as we all gather around in this workshop meeting today, let our conversations be directly from your throne room, directly to be able to help the people of Putnam County. Father, give us wisdom, give us strength and energy to fulfill the job that you've called us to do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, and thank you, Commissioner Goddard. We're going to move straight into public comment this afternoon. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters into the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit any conversations to three minutes. Under the format that we're using today, you had to have called in for public comment. I do not see anybody in the waiting room. Any emails would be distributed to the board and become part of the record. Ms. Parsons, did you have any email for the workshop?
I did, and I just received it. I emailed it out and I also sent it to Sarah.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excuse me just a second. Okay, so the, the email will be forwarded to the commissioners and, and being included as part of the public record. The next item on the agenda, I'm going to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting and call the Port Authority to order. Is there any public comment on, for, for the Port Authority? I don't see any. Do you have any emails for the Port Authority, Laura?
Yes, sir.
Is there any general discussion on Port Authority items? Hearing none, we'll move on. I do want to remember everybody, remind everybody that we have the ribbon cutting for Project Play at 10 o'clock in the morning on the Triangle Park, which is owned by the Port Authority. I hope everyone can show. And with that, we're going to adjourn the Port Authority workshop and move into the, reconvene the Board of County Commissioners workshop. And we're going to start with item 4A, which is Commissioner Goddard's request. Commissioner Goddard?
All right, Kevin's got a drawing, but, but just without the drawing, we had a piece of property that was given to us by Mr. Beck that originally wanted us to, to build the animal shelter on. Due to our core samples and everything else, it deemed that that is not going to be a good location to put a building. So we decided we're going to put the, the animal shelter directly behind where the sheriff's office is, where it is our, it's still county property. What I'm proposing is take the piece of property that's right next to the school board's bus depot area, and it comes out to Highway 19, take that piece of property, put a road right beside the school property, all the way back to the animal shelter. Also out in the front area of Highway 19, make that a parking area. And the rest of that piece of property, make it a, basically a dog fitness trail is what I was looking at. We could have a small area fenced in around a pond, because we've got to have some type of trainers there that stayed at about two feet is what I was thinking. And that area would be fenced in where people could come in there and let their dogs play and run. And then we'd make separate trails throughout the property where you could take your dog, walk, run, and then it have different stations around there with primitive exercise equipment, you know, four by fours with a bar across it, so a chin up and, and just different things like this. And I've gotten a lot of people that's kind of, you know, would, would be glad to volunteer onto this thing. And this would be low impact to the land there and I think minimal cost. But if we, if we could look at the picture, I think you'd get a better idea of kind of, I, I spoke with Kevin on this and Kevin and I preliminarily went through this thing because it would be small maintenance for him. The road would be a, a maintenance item that Public Works would have to take care of, but it would be where we would have our dog or our animal shelter, animal play area, all right there near Triangle Park where people could see it and drive back to where the animal shelter is.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard, sounds like a nice idea to me. I guess the first step would be to find out if we can utilize that piece of property. Is there enough uplands or is it, is it an acceptable use to use that piece of property by water management? Because when they did the wetland delineation on that, there was only a few acres right up in the front right corner next to the retention pond that they deemed was high enough to be able to use for conventional construction. I don't think that it would, it may not present a problem as long as it's high enough to, to put paths down it and a structure like you were talking about chin up bars or some type of an exercise area. How would you like to take it from here? If the commissioners agree, would it be okay with you if we let staff and Kevin and them start looking at it and contact water management and find out, number one, would it be available for that? And, and, and we'll re-workshop this in a short period of time when Kevin comes up with some answers?
Yes, that's exactly what I wanted to do. Like I said, I've gone through this a lot with Kevin and he's, he, he seems to think this would be a great idea. Plus it would highlight our, our new animal shelter. You know, without having to come around the other way, you'd be able to pull up there and drive along an exercise area for the animals back to the animal shelter.
Well, even if we were, even if we were able to, uh, even if we were able to possibly use that small upland area that they allowed us for parking for residents to be able to use it. Like you said, I think it would be a very low cost thing to try to mow some paths in there with a mulching machine and putting up some exercise stations. I've seen some of them before, so I certainly see validity to that wonderful idea that you came up with. Does any commissioners have any problems with us pursuing that?
I have none. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard, if that's what, if, uh, thank you for that wonderful idea and I think what we'll do is turn that over to, uh, to staff and if you don't mind, sir, we're going to, uh, I'm going to assign you to look over that and bring it back to the board as we go on how we're making progress and working with Kevin and working with staff and, and seeing how viable, working with water management, see how viable that it really is, if you don't mind me doing that, sir.
Don't mind it at all. Would enjoy it.
Uh, for me to be able to do that, I've got to have the consensus of the board to allow you to do that. I've got thumbs up from Commissioner Harvey, wave from Commissioner Pickens. How are you, Commissioner Rawls?
My thumbs in the air.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for taking on that challenge, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Harvey?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have an item I'd like to add in here if you don't mind as soon as you're done with Commissioner Goddard.
I think we're done, sir. I think we just turned it over to him to take the bull by the horns.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if it, if it's okay and the board's approval, could I add an item in called 4B? And it would be a street conversation that we've been having. Did not fully understand. We weren't going to have a transportation meeting at the end of the month, and I have an item that is very time sensitive that we need to discuss.
Without exception from another commissioner, I have no problem with that. Commissioner Harvey, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've heard me talk about these roads out in the West Putnam area that I want to take from paved road to dirt road. And that would be Main Street, Arizona, and a little portion of a, a road called West South Carolina. Mr. Troxel and I have met with Anderson Columbia and gotten a price of reclaiming that pitiful road, if you will, to a point where it can go back to a milling type dirt road. And we have talked to procurement, I said yesterday again, and discussed with them the options that we can do. We can waive our procurement policy as a board, and when I give you the price of what this is going to cost, we'll have discussion on that. Right now, the preliminary cost from Anderson Columbia to do Main, Arizona, and that little section of West Carolina, these are areas where asphalt was dumped years ago and HOPE's development would happen, and it hasn't. Today, I received reports from how much patching, asphalt patching we have done, the county has done in the last 10 years. And on Arizona alone, we spent over $6,200 in patching. And on Main Street, hold on guys to your chair, we have spent over $45,000 patching this road that you can't even drive on. Anderson Columbia has given us a price of about $29,000 to take their reclaiming machine in there on Arizona and Main Street and West South Carolina and mill that road up. There might be a little bit of material that's needed on Arizona. And if so, they'd like to put that down before the milling happens so they could mill it all up into one big nice mill road, if you will. So the request I'm having today, you've heard me talk about this for as long as you've been here and before some of you even got there. And had I known we were spending that kind of money, I would have really jumped up and down many years ago. But I, I would like for the board to consider, one, spending $31,000 on these three roads with material, maybe if materials is needed. And number two, waiving our, our procurement policy and allowing Anderson Columbia. The, the key here is, is that Anderson Columbia is in that area of work and they won't be for much longer. And if we don't move pretty quick, they're going to do it when they have time and they're in that area. But if they continue to progress as fast as they are, then we're talking mobilization and we're talking all kinds of fees. So right now, that's where we're at. And Julianne, if Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I've asked Julianne and Mike Troxel to kind of step in and have a little conversation if you don't mind.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, um, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment first. It sounds to me like a very good idea, and I know you've been working on this for quite some time. And I know that it's within the spending authority for us to be able to do it, even though I would have brought this to the board, even though it is within the spending authority. The, I, I guess what I would like, I know that we can waive the procurement proceedings and, and it sounds like a good idea and I'm sure Mr. Trock was probably on board with it. So my question would be as a procedural question. We don't usually make vote, do votes at workshops except on special occasions, and this may be one. Is, uh, if, is Anderson Columbia going to be gone and on, by the next board meeting that we could place it on a consent agenda? Or could we, could we vote to move it forward today and then place it on the consent agenda for the next board meeting on the 25th?
That would be fine. That would be more than adequate right there.
I think that was, that would be my choice. If, if it was me, I would like to, uh, I think it's a great idea and we move it forward and the pricing sounds good. And unless Julianne tells me we can't do this for some reason, and she's saying we can, so, um, yeah, I think it would be my choice to ask for a motion to move it forward to the consent agenda to be approved at the regular board meeting on the 25th. Would you offer that motion, sir?
I'd be glad to, sir. I'd make the motion that we move Main Street, Arizona, and West South Carolina to a total amount of 31,000 to the next board meeting.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Pick under discussion. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, where's, where's this money coming from?
District Public Fund.
Thank you.
District one.
I just want to watch where my funds are going, you know?
In all sincerity, I think we can take it out of the, the Public Works Reserve Fund.
Oh, it sounds like they already spend the money anyways.
Yeah, we're spending more than that in a 10-year period. We got, we got to get rid of this thing.
Right, I, uh,
Yeah, it makes sense. I was just wondering this lump sum, if it was going to come out of some resurfacing money left over, if it was going to kind of general reserves or, or from, um, Public Works.
Well, I would, I would recommend that it came out of Public Works Reserves. Julianne, did you have a comment, please?
Yeah, just typically staff can make a recommendation as to where budget's most appropriate to be pulled from, and we'll put that in the agenda item for the consent.
Does that suit you, Commissioner Pickens?
Yes, thank you.
Sounds, thank you for that. Ms. Young, sounds like a wonderful idea.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me bring that to the board, okay?
Uh, no problem, sir. Um, we, I don't think we've voted on that yet, have we? So, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. That's what workshops are for, Commissioner Harvey, is to bring up those kind of items. So, uh, next on the list is item five, which is commissioner request, and Commissioner Rawls has asked for a sheriff's department budget discussion. So Commissioner Rawls?
I was muted, sorry. Yes, um, so I, I believe we all received the same email from Colonel Wells and from Sheriff Deloche regarding the darkness of their, their needs for the additional funds in their, their budget this year. We really haven't taken the time to discuss that in length. I, I just figured now would be a good time. I personally think that we really need to take a hard look at our budget, see if we can't find the, the, the money to get them funded so they don't have to start making major adjustments. One of the questions that I was asking Colonel Wells was who is responsible for the property maintenance? And, you know, he, he said, well, you know, we're, we're, we're funding it out of our budget, but it's, it's really the Port Authority's property. So I, I think at some point, you know, we could get ourselves in a position here where, um, you know, we're, we're going to put them up against the, between a rock and a hard spot as well as ourselves if we don't allow this funding. But I just thought that we should be able to have a, a conversation about it, see if there's any way of making that money available to them, or at least some, some of it to the point that they won't have to make major changes the way they're operating. Because one thing that we're all enjoying is lower crime rates as a result of the hard work the sheriff's department's done, and we don't want to go backwards from there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Ms. Young, will you, you wanting to answer that?
Uh, yes, sir. I'll be happy to. Remember, we currently have a past tentative budget. All that is, is, is that we have reported to the state that tentatively we have a balanced budget. Administration has worked or has been working with the sheriff's office constantly. In fact, this morning, talking about numbers in order to work through a process and to determine how we can come back to the board with that final budget. Before that happens, there'll, there'll obviously be a lot of conversation, but we're in a normal cycle. This is normally where we are in a tentative budget. We are working with the sheriff's office. As far as maintenance items, Colonel Wells and I work together on an ongoing basis for all of those costs, and he does share some of those costs, as does the county. So we do work together on that as well as their budget requests and, and funding options as we move forward.
Okay, does any other commissioners have any comments on this item before we move forward?
Yeah, I, I do, Chairman Turner. I was understanding, I was understanding that that's what was going to happen, that we have passed this budget, but that we were definitely going to do everything that we can to fund the sheriff, the money that he needs. But also, there's two sides. I mean, there needs to be a conversation with, with staff about what they might be able to reduce, you know? So I, 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 I do believe, you know, the sheriff's office, sheriff's department's doing a great job, and our crime rates are lower, and that's definitely one of the pieces of the puzzle to, to bring Putnam County out of the, you know, where we've been. And so I, I think staff is working with us. So it's not like just we just shut them off. It's just that, you know, this is budget that we've got so far. We've got to find this money. I don't want to dip into reserves. I don't want to raise, can't raise the mileage rate, because it's already set, correct? We have to dip into reserves if we can't find it somewhere else. And I think that the staff is trying to do, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Commissioner Harvey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I agree. I think that let staff continue to work with the sheriff's department. I've had a meeting with them on Friday to look over their line item budget and see what we can do in some of that area. Naturally, I think we all, I, I know this commissioner wants to fund any law enforcement. But the reality is, there's no doubt that there's only so much, there's only so much money to go around. And if we need to fund them, then somebody else will have to be cut. So, you know, I think we will, we'll get there. From my understanding, we're getting closer and closer. And I just look forward to that day that we can sit down and, and come to an agreement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Goddard, did you say something, sir?
No, sir. I'm, I'm listening.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, if there's no more of this on that subject at this time, we're going to move forward and we're going to move forward. Is there any, any attorney comments today? Rich?
No, sir. Sorry, couldn't get off mute fast enough. No, thank you.
No problem. Is there any comments under county administrators?
No, sir. There's no comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into further commissioner request, I am sorry commissioners, I missed that. Commissioner Harvey, do you have any further requests today?
I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about since we can't talk to each other. We have to do it in a meeting. Mr. Turner was in your area the other day working with Mr. Robert Browning at 225 River Street in East Palaca. As you know, he, and most of probably the other commissioners know, he has a big drainage ditch behind his house, and the county uses that to drain that neighborhood. Mr. Browning met with Mr. Troxel and I and has agreed to buy the pipe and extend that to get rid of some of that overgrown monstrosity of, of an area that's out there. So I just wanted to let you know that Public Works is working with Mr. Browning right now. I think Mr. Troxel has some comments he would like to make concerning that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Troxel?
Yeah, uh, we're currently getting it scheduled, but, uh, with, there's going to be a lot of work required back there from us, but if, if we can get him to buy the pipe, that would be huge. He also, he's wanting us to go a little farther than what I'm willing to go to right now, but I really think this will benefit not just his property back there, but the other ones in that, in that area as well.
I guess the question I would have, guys, is who owns a property? Is it private property?
It's the county property.
So the county owns a property. So, uh, Mr. Browning has asked that he, if he buys the pipe, that we fill in a little more of it where it would be easier maintenance and easier. Could we, could we look into that, Mr. Troxel, and see if we, uh, what it would, uh, what the cost on it would be and bring it back to the board, how is, uh, for that portion of it? I understand through an email I saw somewhere that, that we've, uh, agreed to go ahead and clean it out at this time and make it look nicer. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. We're, we're planning on getting all the, all the weeds cut down and seeing where we need to, to go to officially.
Okay, well, if we could continue that as soon as possible and maybe look into the other deal, is that good enough for you, Commissioner Harvey, at this point?
That's fine. Yes, sir. And I, I didn't want to rain on your parade. It was in your backyard and,
No, sir, you're good. And that, that is absolutely no problem. Matter of fact, thank you very much for coming over there and doing some of my work.
If anybody else need me, got plenty of time. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I got one more item I'd like to talk. The crosswalk has been installed across County Road 315 for the pedestrian crossing and signs have went up. The parking lot at the library has been blacked and the new stripes have been put down to accommodate that. What a, what a tremendous asset. Looking for some sod, thinking I might even rent a sod cutter and take some of my Zoysa out and put it up there, but it is really a blessing to have that there. And I just really want to thank you. I know Florida Power and Light will be installing a big light over County Road 315 pretty soon. And it's just, over County Road 315 pretty soon, and, um, it's just really something, it's a small thing, yes, but it really means a lot to that community, and I, and I greatly appreciate every Commissioner supporting that, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That'll end my comments for today.
I say it's a small price for us to pay with our equipment being down in District One all the time, for you, for you to get a cry, a crosswalk out there in your district. So, sorry, Commissioner Pickens. Um, Commissioner Pickens, did you have any, uh, any further items for us today, sir?
Guys are on me today.
That's cause we, that's cause we love you.
And it's never not funny either. It's always funny.
Anyway, I spoke with Travis Roberts, and he's getting really close. He said in just a couple of weeks, he should have the engineering on the load bearing calculations for the, uh, great, uh, Fort Gates Ferry, but hopefully that'll be back to us soon, and we can send that thing out and get it, get a bid on. I want to bring some attention of the board. I've brought it to the attention of Administrator Suggs and then Public Works Director Mike Troxel, is, uh, when they paved Fort Gary, Fort Gates Ferry Road, they paved down to the landing and to the office building, uh, where they operate out of, and they, they raised the height of the asphalt a number of inches, and so they're experiencing flooding in this building. So I just want to bring it to the attention of the board that, uh, to see maybe what we can do about that. Uh, Mike, I, I took Mike Troxel down there the other day and met Travis Roberts and Dale Jones, who actually operates the, uh, facility there, the campground and the ferry. Um, so Mike, do you have any ideas on it yet, um, of what we can do? Travis wants us to, you know, install a whole new building, and I said, well, we need to probably look at some other things that we may be able to do to divert the water, rather than go in there and try to construct a new building. And I didn't know exactly what the county, you know, could, was able to do. I didn't know if we owned that building, or, or did they do, or if they lease it? Mike, I didn't know if you had any thoughts on it yet, uh, if you had time to look on that?
I did think a little bit about it. Uh, I mean, there's, there's different ways we could do, do some, uh, micro shaving, maybe of the, of the asphalt, but I think that's gonna be fairly expensive. Uh, uh, we can always build up some more areas of the asphalt around there to, to help divert the water around the building. But again, I think that's gonna be fairly, fairly costly. Now, he did mention about, uh, $9,000 for a new, a new building, put it up on a couple of concrete, layers of concrete block, and that would fix their, their issue they're having right now. And then, once the ferriers or ferries are done, they will finish the road, the asphalt piece, all the way to the landing. That will also help a little bit. Uh, but I really haven't, other than those couple of things, I really haven't thought of anything else that we can do there.
Well, if you'd look into it a little further, Mr. Troxel, and maybe report to, uh, Commissioner Pickens, or keep him in the loop and let him know how that's going, maybe we can find a low-cost way to, uh, eliminate that problem, or maybe it would even be lower than the $9,000 to take the building they have right now and just jack it up a little bit higher. So I don't know, but if you could maybe take a look at that and keep Mr. Pickens, or Commissioner Pickens in the loop, is that good enough? Yes, sir, Commissioner Pickens?
That, you know, this is an older, an older building, and I, I think that might be possible. You know, I'm not a contractor, but you could even consider that, something of that small, um, it's probably only 20 by 20, if that, uh, square, 20 by 20 by 20. So it might be able to jack it up in a course of block, put on, and that'll eliminate the problem.
Okay, I guess first thing I'd like to know is, is it our building at all? Or is it private, or is it state? I think there's some state lands in there, I'm not sure. So I guess the first thing we need to do, Mr. Troxel, is try to figure out if it's our building or our area, um, where we don't get in trouble.
Exactly.
Was there anything else, Commissioner Pickens?
No, that's all.
Commissioner Goddard, did you have any, uh, requests today for the workshop, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Harvey, did you wave at me again, sir?
I scratched my face, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just caught you out of the...
Did I buy something?
I caught you out of the corner of my eye yesterday. Yes, sir, you just bought another crosswalk. Um, so, uh, we're going to, um, under my comments, um, today we received a, uh, an email, and then we're, I'm not gonna read it as the new rules, but it was from Ms. Reyes concerning the, uh, the different items. Uh, I would like to request, uh, Ms. Young, could, if you would possibly try to answer her the email, and if you don't have a copy, Ms. Parsons, would you send a copy of that email to Ms. Young and ask, uh, specifically for the different answers, uh, to the, to the questions that she asked today? Um, is there anything else to come before the board today?
I...
Yes, Commissioner Rawls, I thought you went first with your, uh, Sheriff's Budget Discussion. Excuse me, sir. Would you, would you add some more comments?
Yeah, um, uh, so I'll, I'll start with regarding Ms. Reyes. Um, she reached out to me about a week ago. I actually met with, uh, Ms. Young and, uh, Mr. Suggs, um, and I, I've, I've got a number of questions. I, I think we need to sit down as a Commission and take a look at, at, um, what we do during these type of responses. You know, we've spent $400,000 plus dollars, um, to date, whether it comes out of CARES Act, whether it comes out of FEMA General Fund, we, we've spent this money. And what it appears is that, that, that the county government cares more about itself than the citizens, um, in the way we respond, paying the overtime that we're paying, to the folks that we're paying it to, the amount of food that, that's being spent, the money that's being spent on food for our, our staff, and most of senior staff, um, and, and yet we don't offer this luxury to the citizens, let alone, um, folks that are, that are, uh, the lower paid people in, that work for the county. Um, I think that we're sending the wrong message. I think that we should be coming from, uh, a, a position that, um, we care, um, more about the people around us than ourselves, and, um, and show it by example. Um, it just, it looks to me like we literally have set up a situation where it benefits a certain few to keep us in this state of emergency or this disaster, so we can continue to pay this overtime. Um, and I'm really perplexed as to why we spent so much money on the food, and this, this is the issue that Ms. Reyes is trying to raise and get answers to, which is number one. And I made the request yesterday, who, who has been, um, receiving, uh, compensation, especially overtime during this, this, um, uh, COVID disaster? And, um, a, a total accounting of the food and why it is that we need to feed our staff for, uh, for this long period of time, and then at some point, we quit feeding staff, but, you know, the day before COVID hit, people were eating. One of the answers offered to me was, well, they had, they had a harder time getting access to food. Restaurants were shut down, but drive-throughs weren't, and, um, we have spent an enormous amount of money at grocery stores, Winn-Dixie, Publix, um, Walmart. So I, I think that we should put this on the agenda to discuss, um, in the very near future, to come up and, and, and sit down and, and take a look at how we respond to this, um, and how we can prevent this, what, what I would consider, um, appearance of impropriety, uh, so the public doesn't have these questions, uh, about how our government's being run. And then, um, I, I just want to raise this question real quick regarding the Sheriff's Department's budget. Um, it's, it's been, um, uh, said that there's a possibility we might be looking to fund the Sheriff's Department, um, their, their budget increase out of CARES Act money. I, I just want to make it very clear, this Commissioner is not in favor of expending one penny of the CARES Act money that does not go directly to our public, um, for anything that we should be budgeting for on a normal budget. That's what the Treasury Department says, um, and I, I, uh, mentioned it to Mr. Suggs yesterday, you know, when he first told me that there might be a way for us to fund the communications system out of CARES Act money, my, my initial knee-jerk reaction was that would be a stretch. So I hope that we're not trying to do that. The money needs to go to the public. Um, we need to get out there any way, shape, fashion, before we can, but not, not fund ourselves, because we've already got our budget and we're funded. We just need to, I, I think, do a better job spending the money. So, um, you know, if Ms. Reyes can get her questions answered, um, I requested a list of, um, from Mr. Suggs. She's gonna get me of everybody that worked at EOC that's been receiving compensation in excess of their, their, um, typical annual, um, hourly or annual salary, and, um, that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Uh, Commissioner Suggs, I'm, or Commissioner, I've promoted you again. Um, Administrator Suggs, I'm assuming that you're still working with Commissioner Rawls on some of these questions? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We, uh, we met yesterday, uh, and, and for about 30, 45 minutes, and we're more than happy to, uh, continue to dialogue and get the information that's being requested by Commissioner Rawls. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I guess I'm gonna have to chime in here a little bit, even though it just kills me. Number one, you know, Commissioner, uh, Rawls, as a, as such an adamant supporter of, uh, first responders, it's just absolutely amazing to me that when the first responders and healthcare workers are out there working 12 hours a day, seven days a week, that you're wanting them, you're wanting not to feed them. It's amazing. So, but I, I'm absolutely willing to sit down and, in a meeting, and if you want to rework the, um, if you want to rework the, uh, what we do during an EOC opening, we did not open EOC. Governor, Governor DeSantis did it by executive order. There's a set, a set of rules, and I admit they were, that they were written for hurricanes, but I, those rule, and those type of events, but those rules are in a book, and they follow the rules the best that I can tell. Um, so anyhow, yes, in the near future, I'd be more than willing, uh, Ms. Young, if you would please, uh, get with Ms. Reyes. I've, uh, emailed her back and forth all weekend. I don't know there'll ever be an end to it, uh, because I don't know if she's getting the answers that she doesn't believe in, and so she thinks they're false, or if she just, I'm not good enough at communicating with her, even though I'm trying to try, so if you would please reach out to her and see what you can do, I'd appreciate it. Okay, is there any, uh, additional business to come before the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, Rawls? I absolutely support first responders, but we have other employees that work 10 and 12 hours a day on a regular basis and that don't get fed, um, especially to the degree that, that we're talking. This isn't, you know, buying pizzas for everybody one afternoon and, um, you know, or, or, you know, hey, you guys did a great job, let's, then let's go buy a bunch of sandwiches from Publix. This was, this, this is a lot of money, and, and we're talking in excess of $20,000. I haven't even finished crunching the numbers, but, um, you know, we didn't extend the courtesy to all employees, and we do have employees that, that break their back every single day. So I'm not saying that the folks that responded by going to EOC and working extra hours don't deserve a pat on the back, but at the same time, they're being, if, if they're salaried employees and are being compensated overtime, we have well-compensated individuals to begin with, and then to, um, compensate them even more, um, with, with, with the overtime. We're in this for six months. You could be looking at somebody getting a 50% pay raise or more year over year. On top of that, we're feeding them. That's my, you know, I, I would just like to sit down and take a look at, at how we, how we stage the responses for situations like this. It wasn't like they were hit by a hurricane, didn't have the ability to drive down the road, electricity was out, stores weren't open, whatever. This was something completely different. So I, I would appreciate the opportunity for us to sit down one day, look at, look at the response on how we open. Um, initially, I was told that well FEMA requires us to do this, and it's, well, it's recommended. So I, I would like to see what the rules are, um, and take a look at it, and try to operate this county as skinny as we can, um, so we can potentially fund the Sheriff's Department budget. Uh, you know, some of this money might have gone to that, who knows? But, uh, I would appreciate the opportunity to sit down and discuss that. Thank you very much.
Well, Commissioner Rawls, I agree, and there's no problem sitting down and discussing it. We'll do that, but this is just gonna be, have to be one of those issues that we agree to disagree on, because I think when somebody's working 12 hours a day, seven days a week, they deserve the opportunity for us to feed them, and plus, the EOC was shut down to limited people coming and going. So as I said, this may just be happen to be one of those options that we agree to disagree on, because I think they deserve every bit of what we did for them while it was going on out there. Is there anything more to come before the board today? Hearing none, this meeting is hereby adjourned.
Have a good week. Have a good week.